I'd like to call the meeting to order for October 5th at 6:01 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank, present.
Yes, Sexton Duranian, present.
Veronica Cal, present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I did that even though we probably didn't have a flag and we are all remote. But there you go. It's good, all good. All right. Thank you, Ross.
I cut to the flag in the Selectmen Room.
Oh, good, good, excellent. All right, I'd like to announce that the meeting is being taped recorded. It will be posted on YouTube after the fact and it should also be live on Channel 9. 1.4 Chairman's Additions or Deletions. I have none. Joe or Chaz, do either of you have anything to add?
I do not.
No, I don't.
Ross, anything to add to today?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, then we're all set there. 1.5 Public Comment Period. Are there any comments to be made?
Madam Chair.
Yes, John, go ahead.
We kind of talked about this a little bit before the meeting began, but I would like to get it on the official record. Very curious as to what the status is of the Town Charter Review and its presentation to the legislature.
All right, thank you. We will update you when we have more information. Anybody else for public comment? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the review of the meeting minutes. For March 23rd, 4/6, 4/27, 5/4, 6/7. Please remove 6/9 and 6/26. This will go to October 19th.
7/26, Madam Chair.
Seven, did I say six? 6/9 and 7/26, thanks, Joe. And we'll look at 9/13 as well. So let's take these one at a time. Let me get to my minutes. So for March 23rd, are there any comments? I think, Joe, you and I were the only ones at the time.
Yeah.
On the board, but Chaz, you're welcome to comment as well. And to vote on them. Any comments on this?
No, that was pretty simple, easy meeting. So I didn't see anything that I brought to my attention.
The only thing that I saw is I have a few things that I would like to have changed just to make it more definite. For example, the Board reviewed the Water Tech and Account Manager job descriptions. I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Water Commissioners and reclassification to Group D. I would like to have to know specifically what positions those were that were reclassified. And it isn't stated there. Do you see where I'm saying, Joe?
Yeah, I do.
I don't know if I'm being too picky with that. But and there are a couple of places in here where I would like to make that change. So if you're good with that amendment. The other one is it says unanimous vote. I would like to say to have, you know, unanimous vote, all in favor or all in favor unanimous. What I don't know is the unanimous vote, is it positive or negative? When it just says unanimous vote. And I know that sounds silly, but someone reading it further down the line might have difficulty with that. So it's specificity for me on that. So if you guys are good with it, I will go in and amend so that when we're reclassifying to D, where it's not specified, that we make that specific. The other one, like the last one on the first page, that we accept the public library, young adult librarian. Is that a new position or is that a reclassed position? It's unclear to me. So I would just, yeah, Ross.
Were these points discussed at that meeting?
Yes, they were. They, at this meeting, the, they were brought out. What date is this? This is the 23rd. This might be the meeting where, just looking at what's here, the library presented is my guess. And after that presentation, we made changes based on what they said. The water came in as a, that was like a memo from the Water Commissioners that we looked at and made changes accordingly. The other was the library and I am pretty sure Stacy attended this meeting and presented. And then we, so I'm not sure, Ross. What are your thoughts on this?
Well, I don't think the minutes need to correct something if it wasn't said or say something that wasn't said. So if the Water Commissioners came in and said, we've got a bunch of people we'd like to reclassify, the Board voted yes. That's probably all that could be put in there unless the Water Commissioners said, we want you to reclassify this job and this job and this job. If they said the specific jobs, then it's fair to list it here.
I'm pretty sure they had specific jobs. I can name which ones they are.
Yeah, they were.
The key is what's said at that meeting versus what might have been implied and not said. That's all. And I can't help you with what was said back in the March meeting.
Right.
Do we want to review the tape and then just come back at this one?
Yeah, I know that it says that reviewed the Water Tech and Account Manager job descriptions.
Well, I have, if I may.
Yes.
This is, I was not in office at the time that this was. But traditionally, we take the agenda and on, from the agenda, that's what the minutes are written from. And there's a couple of things on here that I think should follow how the agenda was set. That way we know exactly what was, so it matches up both the minutes and the agenda. Also, after the motions, I mean, they're in first voice. I think they should be JS made a motion as opposed to I make a motion because that's a narrative. You know, those are just, I know that's nitpicky, but it's traditionally how minutes are written. You know, basically, reporting the job description developed for web admin. I mean, that needs, we, you discussed it at that time. It wasn't, there wasn't any decision that was made on it. The reference to Karen Hill Conservation Commission, I don't understand that sentence. That's, doesn't make sense. And where it says capital plan funding sources, that whole paragraph doesn't make sense to me at all.
I guess the question is, and Ross, this one's for you. When you read the minutes, should you know what happened at the meeting?
Yes, you should know what happened at the meeting. But what's being reported is what was said or voted, not necessarily what was implied.
Right.
If the agenda listed all the jobs, then the minutes might be okay as written because it says, you know, the Board voted the recommendation of the Water Commission and the recommendation was in the agenda. Then I think you're covered, but.
I don't have the agenda in front of me. Does anybody?
I'm looking for it.
23rd, right?
Correct. I didn't bring that notebook with me. So I don't have that.
You brought everything, but I bet.
Well, I brought June forward. I didn't bring the year before that, so. I could probably pull it off the web.
One second.
I don't want to do that yet. Now I'll mess myself up if I go into the website.
I don't, I don't have it here. I have it at the office for sure.
All right, then let's table this one to the next meeting.
Yeah.
To check on that, okay. The next one is 4/6.
Do you want me to make a motion and then we discuss?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion, we accept the minutes for April 6th, 2021.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, discussion. I have a few changes that I want to make on this. They're minor. JS, make a motion that we special municipal exempt employee disclosure. I want to add, accept the special municipal employees. So these are, you know, announced the, under 3.6, VK announced that she is the Selectman and Conservation Representative for the Open Space and Recreation Committee. So she will relinquish the at-large seat is what it comes down to. I had been voted by the Selectmen to be on that committee and then the Conservation Commission voted for me to be their representative, which is fine with me, but I, what I was doing was relinquishing that seat. So I would just want that there. And under 4.4, I have a few changes there just to make it clear. Other than that, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Joe or Chaz?
That minutes were not put in my packet that I got, so I'm missing them. So I can't, I've not been able to review them.
Chaz, were you able to see them? Okay. All right.
Under 4.3.1 STM warrant review. That should be discussed, reallocation of funds, fire EMS and police articles. EMS needs to be capitalized. 4.3.2, that also is discussed, fire EMS.
There's no content there.
Right. Under 4.4.1, where it says the sub-paragraph gathering of 100 people, where it says JS, JS asked to call the state or something in there. He made a comment to make sure that we checked with the state on that.
This is where, that's the same paragraph where I have some changes.
Yep.
There was conflicting information in the state notes. So I was going to put that conflicting information in the notes from the state. So it says that you can have a gathering of 100 people in an indoor gathering and it says 150 outside is allowed by the state, except by the building. Anyway, that I have some changes in there just to make it clear what happened.
And then under 5, 5.1, it's community opportunity group. Not communities, opportunities, group.
This is CAG.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all I had on that.
Okay. So can we vote to accept as amended? And I'll make the amendments that we had. The 3.5, 3.6, 4.3.1 and 0.2 and the second paragraph under 4.4.1. All right. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
All right, accepted Veronica Cal, yes, accepted as amended.
And then I'll move those over in a PDF to the approved file to be posted.
Okay, let me. Let's get the amendments done first.
Yep.
Okay.
Just to.
All right.
Send me an email when they're done and then I'll take care of it from there.
Okay, hold on. All right. The next one is 4/27.
I move that we approve April 27th, 2021 minutes.
Second.
All right, any comments?
I think that we should have, instead of having, it says Mr. Pridehler and I think it needs to be the town administrator.
Are you looking at 1.3?
I'm looking at 1.4. When, yes, 1.4, 1.5.
4.3.
So you want to change Mr. Pridehler to the town administrator?
Yeah, everybody else's initials or whatever, and that's the only name that's in there, so.
Okay. All right.
If you got initials, why is it any different? I've mentioned his full name. I mean, they could.
Under 3.2, in regards to appointment to Cultural Council. That needs to be changed to appoint Karen Provost to be appointed to, it needs to, appointment to the Cultural Council for a one-year term.
Um.
Unless you want to keep it like that.
Well, it.
I was saying we appointed her for a one-year term.
I put, asked what the process is for an appointment recommendation from a board or committee. The process is, and this was in the tape, I watched it, volunteer form an appointment request from the committee. And then I, at the end, I, it says unanimous vote. Again, I would like unanimous vote in favor. And then appointment through June 30th. And there was no year mentioned. So there was that. And then, so I, we can make that. Did you have different changes, Chaz?
Than that, no, I just needed that, that needed to be cleared up, I felt.
Okay, so I agree. So we can amend 3.2. And then the next one is in 4.1. It's under the second JS, that paragraph. The Board reviewed the liaison list, see attached. It says the Housing Authority was moved from elected boards to general government. All I put there was, since Chaz is on the Housing Authority, the, it was moved just for the reason for moving it. It was moved, but we talked about the reason on that.
I had that too, because I didn't want that as a permanent change.
Correct. So it was for that reason. I was good with 4.2. 4.3, 4.4. Under the motion JS, it's Kara Runston with an R as opposed to Conston. That's just a typo. And I added, the Board recognizes Beth Paxton for doing a great job on writing the grant under MVP. Because we did, I was good with. I had made some changes, but I went back. CSD, Jim will get a quote from the meeting next week is what I put under 4.6. I move that we have the town administrator research and find quotes for temporary accounting services while we need them. And it was determined that Jim will get the quote for the meeting next week. So I wanted to put that in. Under 5.1, this is in the Planning Board budget for the master plan and the invoice will be paid for next week's warrant. So that was 5.1. And. And I had a big question mark under the executive session.
As did I.
Because this was the one where, where, Joe, you made a motion to get the increase and I'm fading out here. I'm really sorry. Let me see if I can, I don't know where I can put this to. Is that better?
Yep.
You can at least see me and maybe I can see my paper too. Anyway, there was, there was documentation discussed and we decided to just go into executive session, which had been planned. We were trying to skip, when you made the motion, Joe, we were trying to skip the executive session to make the motion, but it became clear that we couldn't do that. And so we, we went into executive session. So I have a big question mark there. We just need to put words in on that, I think. So it's clear why we made a motion. We voted no and then we moved into executive session. Or is that good enough just to say you make the motion, you voted no, and then we went in? Do we need a reason for that, Ross? I'm making you the minutes guru.
You should state the reason for going into executive session.
Well, we did do that. You know, there's, there's a statement there as far as which purpose it was.
I, can I throw my two cents worth in there? After, after CSD seconded, I wrote, no vote was taken and a discussion ensued. Agreed to enter into executive session.
Okay, I like that. No vote was taken and a discussion ensued. And sued, the decision was made to go into executive session.
Yeah.
All right.
And then the minute state, you know, the reason for the executive session and the roll call vote.
Correct.
Yep.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
All right, so in that case, can we make a, a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I make a motion that we accept the April 27th, 2021 minutes as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right. Let me go down here. 5/4 is the next one. And I don't have 5/4 in front of me. All right, so any comments on 5/4? I don't have them here.
I have a couple.
It's getting dark and if I, I knew it was getting dark and I tried to put everything in order. Any comments? Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the May 4th, 2021 minutes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any comments?
Under 5.1,
Okay.
it says unanimous vote, but it couldn't be unanimous because I abstained.
Okay.
Which one's that, Chaz, who says town administrator updates?
No, in 1.5.
Oh, 1.5, okay.
1.5?
Yep. There's two, there's two sections where I abstained from the vote and it says unanimous vote.
Right, I see that. So you abstained, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Under 2.1, I'd like to put State Representative Sheila Harrington there.
Okay.
It, on 4.1, it was vote on town administrator goals and objectives, but it doesn't show a vote.
What was the number on that?
4.1. And if I remember correctly, we said that we were going to bring it up at the next meeting.
Right.
So there was nothing voted on.
All right.
Under 5.1 Work Session, it just says town meeting in a day and then it says heat, see away. The, I think that just needs to be clarified as to what that was. That was, we were discussing what we need for the town meeting, I believe.
Right.
Can we just say discussion on what we need for town meeting?
That's what I'm thinking.
All right.
Under 5.4, it says reports from board liaisons. It just says Conservation Commission, so I don't know what that means either. What was the report? And that's all I got.
All right. All right, so that needs amended.
So I move that we amend and approve the minutes for May 4th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, so that's 5/4, 6/7. Hang on one minute, you guys. All right, any, is there a motion for 6/7, for accepting 6/7? This really isn't working, is it?
I move that we accept the minutes for June 7th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any changes to these, you guys?
I'd like to take all the, all of that as italicized and I don't understand why that is.
That's because I italicized all the minutes that I wrote to separate them from the agenda. That's why.
Gotcha. Gotcha, okay.
If you'd rather have them non-italicized, I can select all and take that off, no problem.
I'm good anyway.
The.
Madam, excuse me, Madam Chair?
Excuse me, Joan, we're in the middle of discussing the minutes, so if you could wait a bit, thank you. Go ahead.
I like the flashlight.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chaz.
The. After where everything is indented, there's a VK, the second VK, where it says CSD to check with Carla to verify recycling center, blah, blah, blah.
Give me a number.
That would be under 5.1.1. Review of the Fiscal Year 21 Job Postings. On the second page.
Okay.
It says VK then a motion to confirm. I don't know what that means.
I don't see.
And then it says JS, so be it.
Where are you at?
Yeah, where are you?
On. On the second page. Where everything is indented, then the first one that sticks out, it says VK. A motion to have JS consult with the Fire EMS. And then I'm at that second one where it says VK, CSD to check with Carla to verify recycling center position. We're on June 7, right?
We're on June 7.
I, I. Number you want, Chaz?
On the second page, 5.1.1. You've got.
My page.
Two postings, and then you have the second page.
Yeah, it says VK will pull a job description from the MMA website and customize it to Townsend. Is that where we are?
That's the top of the page, Chaz.
Yeah, keep on going down.
Conservation Positions and Highway Department Assistant. Discussion to post the Conservation Administrator Position for 19 hours.
All right, yeah, I got it. All right.
Yeah, the, the. The margins on this are pretty awful, aren't they?
Yeah, but if you keep on going down, it's, okay, where you just read, where the Conservation Administrator. And it says VK posting the highway. CSD Motion to Pass the Highway Department.
Where are you at?
Same place. I'm just going down the list.
The posting for the Highway Department System is for 10. Motion was made, CSD and seconded JS to post the Highway Department Assistant. All in favor unanimous. Motion was made, CSD and seconded JS to repost the Conservation Agent with the start date of July 1.
Yes, keep on going.
All in favor. Motion was made and seconded that when resumes come in for these positions, the respective liaison will be the one handling the resumes.
Yep.
Remove Kitchen Assistant from the website hired at last meeting. Remove Maintenance Tech. Motion was made and seconded, JS said all postings be put on the Town Clerk's Bulletin Board and the Town Website and the MMA Website.
Yep. Then VK made a motion to have JS consult with Fire EMS.
Update the job posting for the full-time fire, the full-time fighter paramedic position.
Yeah.
That should probably say firefighter.
Right.
Motion was made and seconded to verify that the recycling center position was posted. Vote, all in favor unanimous. Do you have an old copy?
I may have. Because it says CSD Committee believes that it was VK then motion to confirm is what I have.
That's an old version.
Okay.
Well, I got the newest.
All right. I think the newest one is good. Okay, so what do we want to do with these, you guys?
So I'm good with that. So I move to amend the June 7, 2021 meeting minutes.
At, where at?
Oh, did we had, we had no amendments then?
Not if what you said was the only thing you wanted pulled out, because it was pulled out.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So then, no, I strike that, reverse it.
All right, so all in favor of approving June 7?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, September 13. Is there a motion to accept September 13?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes for September 13, 2021.
Second.
Any comments? I have none on this. I'm good with these.
I'm good with those two.
Yeah, this is pretty, pretty new, pretty exactly what we all said.
Yep.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, thank you very much. We'll have a whole new set for next time. All right. Moving on to. Two, there's nothing, no appointments and hearings. Moving to three. Oh, that's interesting, that number is off. This is a vote to appoint Mary Jane Churchville to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2024, if all OML and charter requirements have been met. So this came in on. I guess September 23, it was turned into the. Town Clerk's Office. This resignation, the resignation of Robert Thompson came to us, though, just for this meeting. So it was not to us on September 23. I don't know how important that is with the Charter, but by Charter, it looks that like when the resignation comes in, it gets posted for 10 days, and then there are 14 days to consider people that have put in for it. So if I look at this, this is Section 7-10 of the Charter under Notice of Vacancies. Whenever vacancies occurs in any town office position or employment, or whenever by reason of impending retirement or expiration of a fixed term of vacancy can be anticipated, the Appointing Authority shall forthwith cause public notice of such vacancy to be posted on the Town Bulletin Board for not less than 10 days. Such notice shall contain a description of the duties, position or employment, and a listing of the necessary or desirable qualifications to fill the office position or employment. No permanent appointment to fill such office position or employment shall be effective until 14 days following the date such notice was posted to permit reasonable consideration of all applicants. So what we have here, and if you look at the agenda. Under. Five point. I guess it's 5.2? No, it's 5.3. The resignation came in today, but it was posted at the Town Clerk's Office somewhere around the 23rd.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I had done some research, research on this. It appears that the vacancy has been posted. It has been well over 10 days. It was done in, I want to say July or August, is when the resignation had gone through for this particular position. It, there was a meeting that the resignation was accepted, and that's what we're reading later on in Section 5. But I do believe that the Historic District Commission is within the open meeting law guidelines, and I will make a motion to appoint Mary Jane Churchville to the Historic District Commission for a term to expire June 30, 2024.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a question then. Robert Thompson submitted his resignation as member of the Townsend Historic District Commission on September 23. And if I look at the letter that he submitted, it is dated September 23. So I'm wondering if what you're talking about, Chaz, was an old posting?
No, it's, there was still a continuing vacancy from July. Or August.
So do we have two vacancies then?
Yes.
On the Historic District Commission?
We do. We have two with Robert's resignation, so.
Okay, so we, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, there are 7 on this commission, is that correct?
There is 7, yes, with an alternate.
All right, so the position we're appointing is not to Robert.
Correct.
Robert's position. It is to the opening that was there.
Correct, and.
All right.
Lisa is on, and Elisa can, can speak to that as well.
Okay, Elisa, go ahead.
You're muted. You gotta unmute, Elisa.
Yes, yes, I, I just had to find it. I thank you all for your time tonight. Yes, Chaz is correct. We were posting for a vacancy on the board.
Okay, so.
Right.
This is over and above Robert.
Right, we didn't.
Okay.
Mary Jane's Volunteer Response Form was received on September 20.
Okay.
We did not know about Robert's resignation until after this.
Okay.
So then we. So we were, we were going against the vacancy that was there, and then boom, oh, now we have two. So what, they're two different subjects.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Elisa. So there's a motion on the floor. All those, are we ready to vote? Any further comment? Nope. All right, so all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes, to appointing Mary Jane Churchville to the Commission, so congratulations.
Congratulations, and there is still an opening for Historic District Commission, so if anybody's interested, send in a volunteer form, and Elisa will act right on it.
Actually, Elisa, I sent you one, but it was someone whose first choice was Cultural Council, second choice was Historic District, so I don't know between the two where that sits. So there's at least one. All right.
I did receive the Veronica.
Did it come, did it come in the mailbox, or did it come email?
No, I couldn't open the attachment.
Okay.
From you. Because, well, I'm not listed in the directory for some reason. It wouldn't allow me to open it. And I went to Town Hall and got a copy.
Okay.
So that was today. So I did, I just saw that, that the first, her first choice was Cultural Council.
Right, and I don't know if they have openings either, so.
I don't either. I haven't, I haven't gotten past getting the copy, and so I'll move on with it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thanks, Elisa.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 4.1, Discuss and Vote on Transfer of Six Parcels to the Affordable Housing Trust. Is there a motion?
I move that we transfer six parcels to be named South Row Road Parcel ID 25-5-1, Dudley Road Partial ID 28-57-0, Wallace Hill Haynes Road Parcel ID 34-74-0, Haynes Road Parcel ID 34-80-0, West Elm Street Parcel ID 10-52-0, and Blood Road Parcel ID -10-70-0 to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any comments?
Comment, Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Joan.
I'll put my video on. Hi, I'm all for it, as Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust.
And I, I should, full disclosure, I'm the Board of Selectman representative to the Affordable Housing Trust. And, and I, I concur. I, I don't know what the cost is to transfer it, but it's town property to another town, well, pseudo-town organization. So it's a nonprofit, but it is. There is an agreement with the town, so. Other comments on this? Laura? Go ahead. Laurie?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to mute myself. I'm just going to give you a little background on how the recommendations finally came through the Town Properties Committee. We met and we looked at all of the town-owned properties that did not have buildings on them. And many of the properties. We didn't just recommend to go to the Housing Trust. There were also some that we recommended to go to Conservation Commission. And that's how this came before the Board of Selectmen, as a recommendation from the Town Properties.
Okay, thank you, Laurie.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this?
Yeah, I, I've got a, I've got a couple. Question number one would be, I think, for, towards Ross. Is this really, I guess I don't understand the procedure. Do we need to check with Town Council? Does Town Council need to do anything with this, or?
Ross, you're muted.
What's happening here is you're just transferring the property to the Housing Authority, which is in your purview to do, and it's in their purview to accept that property. Any future transfer, if they were to go sell these, these parcels, I think they actually, by transferring it to the Housing Authority, they can sell it on their own without having to go to town meeting vote.
Right.
That is correct.
Were to sell on their own, they have to go to town meeting vote, but the Housing Authority can do it on their own. So probably some transaction where they're selling it to an owner, you'd have Town Council involved or a real estate lawyer involved. But there's nothing at this stage that requires Town Council to opine on this.
Okay.
So I, I do have a question then, Ross. These would need to be re-registered as, with the registry, as the ownership now being the Townsend Affordable Housing Trust, correct? So there would be something that would need to be done?
Yes, there's filing fees and that type of process to make this happen, so there's some cost associated with this.
Okay.
There may be another cost if the 40 Housing Trust wants to do something. They want to develop those parcels. There may be some costs associated with that, but at this point, all you're doing is transferring the control to them.
Okay.
Laurie's got a question.
Yeah, well, I don't have a question. I was just going to make a comment. Regarding the fact that the transfer to the Housing Trust would, would be done via a deed. So there's the drafting of the deed, and then the recording of the deed. I can't imagine that, I mean, I don't know what Adam's company charges, but typically 150, it would be the average amount for the preparation of a transfer deed, and then the recording is whatever the registry charges, and that might be about 150. So you might be looking at $300, but it would be per.
Per property.
Yeah, because you wouldn't want. Yeah, because you wouldn't want them all on one.
Right, okay.
All right, good job.
Thank you, Laurie.
So who's gonna follow up to have, get those deeds updated and filed?
I think that will be, to me, it seems like there should be a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust. And that we will, we, the Affordable Housing Trust, would meet them with Town Properties. And that it would be a joint profit, joint effort to get that done. But I think the town, the town, oh, that's nice. That I think the town, the Affordable Housing Trust needs to meet first to say that they, we say we will transfer them. Don't they have to also accept them?
Yeah, so it's.
As a board?
Yeah.
So it's a joint effort?
So technically, the town owns it, not Town Properties. Town Properties recommending them to be transferred over. So it would be the Board of Selectmen and the Affordable Housing Trust.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because it is the town that owns these properties.
Right. And then generally, it is, if I may, Madam Chair.
Sure, go ahead, Laurie.
It is the quote-unquote seller who drafts the deed, okay? And it is normally the buyer who does the recording. So basically, the two entities, Board of Selectmen and the Affordable Housing Trust, would be splitting the fees, but kind of.
The Affordable Housing Trust has no money, because when the town set it up, we said, it was set up with no, no funds, so.
But it can receive funds.
It can receive funds. Yes, it can. So we can work on that when we have a meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Just let me know.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, I see you have your hand up. Is it something that's relevant to this discussion?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I want to be brief, but I, just, this seems like something that would require the use of an attorney. Not to say that you, what I'm hearing is that you're saying you don't want to even consult with Adam, but you're going to register property, transfer property from a town entity to a nonprofit and file, do all kinds of filings in the Registry of Deeds and Transfer Funds without even.
Thank you, Cindy. We'll find out what needs to be done, and we'll go from there. So I think the vote right now is on the transfer of the properties. The procedure will work that out once the Affordable Housing Trust meets to determine that they are willing to accept.
And Madam Chair, if I may, there has been extensive conversations with Town Council in regards to this entire process. So this is not something that, you know, we're just kind of doing without checking. I've been working with the Housing Authority. I've been working with the Affordable Housing Trust. I have been talking with state legislature in regards to this. So we are going into this particular transaction with our eyes very wide open.
All right, Joan, I see your hands up. Go ahead.
Thanks. Madam Chair, so I would like to, I've been able to see all of these properties. And I want to thank this board for this action, and especially Chaz. And it's a wonderful thing, because it's gonna be great for this town. Thank you.
All right. So are we ready for a vote?
Yep, we are.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, thank you very much. We'll go from there.
Thanks, Chaz, for putting all that effort in with everybody.
Yes. All right, 4.2, moving on. This is a vote to post the positions funded at Spring 2021 Town Meeting for the Land Use Coordinator, which is a full-time, 35-hour-per-week position. The Grant Administrator, which is part-time at 15 hours a week. And the Webmaster, which is a stipend position. So what I was thinking is if we could get a motion to post, we can work on the postings. And then, once they're, you know, we can circulate them. And once they're satisfactory to the three of us and Ross, we could get those posted.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
I move to post positions funded at Spring 2021 Town Meeting, which are the Land Use Coordinator, full-time; Grant Administrator, part-time; and Webmaster, stipend position.
All right. Thank you, Joe and Chaz. So of all of those, the only one that is a benefited position is the Land Use Coordinator.
Correct.
So, and I believe that was a Grade E Step 1 position, as was the Grant Administrator. Both of those were Grade E Step 1 on the Collins Scale.
You have an audience, Veronica, so you're all lit up?
I have, I, there was a lantern brought to me, so I am now all lit up.
Where you are in the woods.
So there you have it. I don't, I no longer can look like a ghoul. All right, so further discussion, any discussion on this? Joe, Chaz, or Ross?
No.
Okay, are we ready for a vote then?
Yes.
Actually, before we do, I will say that I put in the SharePoint the old Land Use Coordinator position. I had gone through, this was pre-COVID, and changed the qualifications and requirements. I had worked with Jim on that. This was also pre-Collins Center. So I put in SharePoint the Collins Center job descriptions as well. And I actually liked the requirements and the qualifications in that posting. So we can work on that and get something out there. So the Grant Administrator and the Webmaster are from scratch. I don't believe either of the, I know that neither of those are in the Collins Center report, because they are totally new positions. So we have a little bit of work to do there, you guys. All right, are we ready for a vote? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes, thank you very much. All right, our next one is a vote to adjust the interim TA contract for additional hours. So when, let's start with a motion, and then we can discuss. So is there a motion?
I move to adjust the interim Town Administrator's contract for additional hours.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. The discussion that I have is that when we, we first wrote the contract, we had under compensation, Section A, we had written it as an hourly position. And Ross has had requested that it be that we go with the number of hours and just divide it up and make it salaried. And since he's been in the position, it has become quite noticeable to me that he's putting in way more hours than what you ever would have expected on, on the town. So he is three days a week, but it would be nice if we changed that back to hourly. So what I've done is I've gone to Section A, and I've changed it to read, "The interim Town Administrator will provide the services under this agreement at a rate of $75 per hour, not to exceed a maximum of 40 hours per week. Compensation will be processed on the regular day for payroll for Town Hall employees." I kept be the same. Regular days of work will be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday with adjustments for Monday holidays. So that it's understood that whatever hours Ross puts in, in those three days that he works, those are the hours that we pay him for. So that's what I think would be reasonable without making Ross think he needs to be here five days a week. But I know that the last time we had a Tuesday night meeting, Ross put in a 13-hour day. He was here from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and those hours were spent working. So it doesn't seem right to pay someone for an eight-hour day and then have them there for 13. And there is work to be done, so, Joe, go ahead.
Madam Chair, thank you. I just want to kind of reiterate here a little bit. I think Ross has gone above and beyond the call of duty for us. He's there more than I think he's not there. I really appreciated him coming on board and going along with what we all agreed on. But I feel we, as a community, have to make him whole. He's putting in, as you said, more time than we ever planned on him doing. And he could be there for 40 hours a week, every week, with that much work. But, you know, I like where you went with, you know, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and paying him by the hour. And I hope that kind of makes him a little bit whole for what he's doing for us as a community.
And I also want to say that if it, if the 40 hours does happen, you know, if there are hours worked outside of the office on the days when Ross is not in the office, those hours count.
Yes.
Chaz, anything you want to add?
No, I, I'm in full agreement with everything you said. I think Ross has been, he has shown his value to us, and I think that we need to, to show him that we do appreciate what he's doing for us.
So be it. Let's take a vote.
All right.
So be it again.
One in the minutes, Joe. All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So Ross, we'll get the, the contract updated. It might not be until next week when I get back, and we'll get that signed. All right.
That's great. I appreciate all of your support. This job has a lot more going than I realized when I said 24 hours.
We apologize.
It needs probably 40 or 50 hours a week, but that's why I suggested at the last meeting that you start the process for hiring a permanent person. So let me, when the, when the extra hours kick in, I will turn in the time card or timesheet accordingly.
That sounds like a plan. All right, so thank you. All right, moving on. Town Administrator Updates and Reports. So that is you, Ross. I haven't looked at the SharePoint to see if you put anything in there. I'm sorry.
I did, and I've added stuff to it since then. But you just recently posted some new positions. I'd like to ask permission to post the opening for the Accountant's Position. Currently, we're filling that with Terry part-time, but we need to make plans to make that a full-time position. I was gonna post this at the same rate that we had for the Treasurer Collector. And that's 71,000 to 83,000. It's about a Step 8 to Step 14 range. I've checked other towns, and it's still a little bit low for other postings I'm seeing, but I think it fits within the Collins Scale.
We have, we have two interim accountants. We have an interim accountant and an interim deputy accountant. So this full-time position will take care of both of those. Both the position that Terry and Dick are currently in, correct, Ross?
That's, I think that is correct.
Okay.
I mean, we've been working on getting the two of them, Terry and Dick, to divide things up, but I think you need somebody full-time in there.
I, I agree. So as, I agree with the posting.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Yeah, me too.
Do we need a vote, Ross, or can we?
I, I think the appointment, so the postings have to go through your board, so I think yes.
Okay, so, and, and same as with the other three that we just discussed. We'll look at the posting, and once we all, you'll circulate it, and once we all agree to it, put it up. Is that correct, Ross?
Yes. If you haven't seen it typed already, then yes. Let me know when you're okay, because it is in the SharePoint.
It's in the SharePoint. I haven't, sorry.
I'll give you my okay, so.
I gave you.
Okay, so it's just me that has to look. All right, I'll try to get that done before the end of the week. All right, so is there a motion?
Are we doing all three or four positions?
One at a time. Let's go with one at a time, because I don't know what the other ones are.
Well, that's the only one I've got, is the accountant right now. You've already voted on the other ones.
Oh, yeah, so it's just the accountant?
Yeah.
So I move that we post for the accountant position.
Full-time accountant position.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chaz Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, let me just say that on the website, there, there was a Town Administrator statement put up. I'm gonna take that one down, because we are not going to be posting for that. But we are the Web Administrator, the Grant Administrator, the Land Use Coordinator, and the accountant are the four coming soon. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, those are the four we okayed today, once we all approve. All right.
I don't believe you agreed to, to post for the Town Administrator position yet.
We, we did not, but it appeared.
You agreed to post for a selection committee.
We did agree to post for a selection committee. It is, it, it appeared on the website last week, so I'm gonna take it out. I, I put a "coming soon" in there. I don't really know the history on that. But I saw that there were positions listed there under jobs and volunteering. So I went in and put in "coming soon." There was no link to any of those positions. So I'm gonna go in and take out the Town Administrator and replace it with the accountant.
Okay.
All right. All right, so, all right, Ross, go on.
In case somebody hasn't heard, Fire Chief Mark Borton has requested an extension to his medical leave, now going to November 1. I've heard a lot of good things about Acting Chief Gary Shepherd, who's done to resolve some of the personnel management issues down there already. He's also coping with an occurrence of COVID outbreak with a member of the, number of the firefighters down there. So he is really stepping up, I think, as I'm found with interim positions. It's a lot more work than you initially think it's gonna be. And I think it would be appropriate that he receive a stipend as Acting Chief for $1,200 a week. He's putting in a lot more than the sort of 20 hours that he and I had talked about when I nominated him for this position. And it's crucial that we keep that fire department running and work to resolve some of the issues down there. So that's why I'm asking you permission to pay him $1,200 a week.
Madam Chair?
Is there, is there, should we have a motion first? All right, is there a motion?
Is it considered a stipend, Ross?
Yes.
So it's on top of what he's normally getting?
What he's getting as a deputy chief is very small amount. It's a few grand a year as deputy chief at a low rate, so.
I think as the deputy, they get $5,000 a year, I think. So I just, Madam Chair, can I just?
Could we have a motion first? Would you make a motion to entertain the stipend, and then we'll discuss?
All right.
I move that we approve a stipend of $1,200 to the interim Fire Chief.
Acting Fire Chief.
Acting Fire Chief.
I'll second that.
All right, so Joe, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I just want to kind of reiterate a little bit in talk on the subject as the Public Safety Liaison. Deputy Chief, Acting Chief Shepherd has gone above and beyond the call of duty. Just going in and out of that. Just going in and out of that firehouse in the past several weeks, things have really changed. There's a lot of, a lot of great improvement there. I sat in on a meeting just last week with, you know, himself and all his officers. I think he's made a lot of positive changes and I think we just need to keep moving forward and hope whatever changes he makes, that whatever happens when the chief, if he does come back, then all those policies stay in place and move on. That's all I have to say.
Chaz, anything to add?
I don't.
Ross, I just, I probably don't have to ask this, but for the funding, are we good with that? Where are we with special town, at special town meeting, we're going to need to to amend a lot of our budget lines. So I was just curious if that had been looked at.
Yeah, I believe we have funding we can find for this. As you pointed out, we could ask for it if we think we're gonna be short at the special town meeting.
Okay.
We also could ask for the finance committee for reserve fund transfer. This was unanticipated, unexpected. They would have to.
Yeah.
And this rate is still way below what a full-time chief would receive, so it's a bargain for the town.
I support it, yeah. So I was just curious on that because I know that's why I asked for the budget to be sent out last week. I wanted to see the September budget and Terry did send it, so. This is a little off-topic, but in the same way, COVID outbreak, have they looked at? I don't know what's involved with that, but I know that CARES Act funds are still in place if there's additional staff that needs to be hired or for anything like that that goes on, so maybe that as well.
I will pass it on to Gary, but I think he's been doing well to keep everything staffed and functioning and serving the town like it was supposed to.
Okay, I'm just wondering if there are extra shifts being filled that were unanticipated. Can the funding for those shifts come from the CARES Act funds?
Yeah, be supplemented. Me too, me too.
Well, I do believe some of these personnel are regular full-time people, so they are out being paid. And I think they have to fill those shifts, so I would think, Ross, if you could look into that, that would help him with some of that CARES Act money. That'd be a great help.
Jennifer, Jennifer, the CSS consultant, might be able to help with that. So, all right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So let's get that going for Gary.
While we're on that topic, we still have a posting for the treasurer collector's position after Jared left. I've received a few applicants, but I wanna keep looking for some more to come in. In the meantime, Rebecca Hershey has stepped up. She is working extra hours to fill in for Jared. She's coordinating her extra time with Anthony, who's actually been out on family medical leave himself. He's graciously volunteered to work some nights and weekends so he can continue getting payroll done. So the two of them are working different schedules. Anthony's got the benefit now of getting paid for his regular, for the time he works versus taking it all as unpaid family medical leave. But I would like to have Rebecca compensated at three hundred dollars a week for her extra hours and the fact that she's picking up extra responsibility. I've seen her in there well past six o'clock at night and here she's been in as early as five o'clock in the morning. But she is stepping up trying to make sure everything continues to function in there, and I think it's appropriate that we have a stipend for her.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve a stipend of three hundred dollars a week for the assistant treasurer collector.
Second.
All right, I just wanna say that Rebecca did this last year when we were without a treasurer last fall, and I think it's important that we provide a stipend for her. She is doing extra work, so.
I've built it, as Ross said earlier, and I've seen her there. And it's amazing that, you know, we have such great employees in our community. And this is where we as the Board of Selectmen shine, and we make sure we take care of the citizens, the employees of our community that are working for us. And I can't thank all of them enough and really appreciate all their extra effort. I know we're going through a tough time with employees, but we all stick together, things will get better. Just wanna thank you all.
Yeah, to add insult to injury, we also had a banking change with some of the procedures and there was IP addresses that we had to change and coordination between RIT and the bank and all of that kind of stuff. And I've been in trying to help out between both Anthony and Rebecca to make sure that things are running smoothly system-wise, so that they can concentrate on what they need to do as opposed to, you know, anything else. So I agree with everything you guys have said.
Anything further? All right, all in favor, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So thank you, Ross, for getting those stipends in there.
And thank you for your support. I think this is, we've got some good people. They need to be recognized. I was in Templeton this morning to discuss health insurance for FY twenty-two and twenty-three. And I think you and I need to talk probably offline about the town's involvement with the joint purchasing agreement that was started between Dunstable, Templeton, and Townsend, and as well as the use of their consulted broker NFP. But it was good to get caught up in where that is from their perspective. I was asked to mention that the planning board is looking for associate members, associate members to fill a one-year position. I think they have a couple of members who've had to recuse themselves, so they are really desperate to have a quorum so they can continue to function on some of these projects. Special town meeting. I've talked to the town clerk and I've talked to the moderator. And after getting their input, I'd like to propose a special town meeting be held at seven o'clock Tuesday, December fourteenth. It would be in the great hall upstairs in town hall. If the board agrees with that, then I would suggest that you also vote to open the warrant starting tomorrow and have the warrant close on November first at four PM. Those dates will allow us time to write the warrant, have town council review the warrant, get it printed, posted by the constables, and all the other logistics for a town meeting.
All right, is there a motion?
Yeah, just a second.
Motion would be for hold a town meeting at seven o'clock Tuesday, the fourteenth. Open the warrant tomorrow, October sixth, and close the warrant November first, four PM.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ross, I have one question for that date. What does that do as far as setting of tax rates? Are we before the time the tax rates have to be set?
I think by that time, we would have the tax rates set, but.
It's just a question.
It's late in the year for setting tax rates, but considering that we're working with new positions in the, you know, in all those offices, the key offices, was we just talked about. I think it gives us the most amount of time, you know, we've got
Right.
There's conflicts with December seventh with some of the individuals. If we have it earlier, we will just plain run out of time. I mean, we wanna wrap up all the budget. We wanna wrap up the union contracts, so we know what the budgets are. I hear there may be some other warrant articles people want, so I don't see how we can do it any sooner.
Okay, all right, and that's what it is. All right, all, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes. So special town meeting is December fourteenth and the warrant opens tomorrow.
All right, and it closes on the first of November. So if anybody's got articles, now is the time to get them to me.
All right.
Jim Smith and I, and with the assistance of Carolyn, we conducted a bid opening for highway materials on Monday. We received eleven, our bids from eleven companies, and it covered asphalt, crack sealing, reclamation, milling, and washed sand. So after Jim and I review everybody's bids, we'll have recommendations for you, for the board to vote on and award those contracts at your next meeting.
Okay.
Some projects, someone mentioned to me that there is a bridge issue on Greenville Road.
That is correct.
That the town obtained some money for engineering and also had some grant money to cover about five hundred thousand dollars of the actual repairs. That grant apparently disappears in September of twenty-two, September next year.
That is correct.
But the lowest bid came in close to a million and a half.
Correct.
It looks like we're short a million dollars plus.
That's all.
I mentioned just that it's, we might need to try to apply for a second extension. I don't know what the chances are of that. Or, and to look for additional funds. And that's a wide-open topic when I say that, so.
There's, I have, I'm kind of looking into the possibility of, I know that the water department is looking to extend out in that way, and if they run water underneath that bridge, we might be able to use that as an infrastructure project for the water department as well to get some funding.
I'm thinking, and you're thinking ARPA funds, Chaz? Water, water infrastructure for ARPA funds is a possibility, but bridge projects, that sort of infrastructure doesn't appear to be in the cards right now for designated projects or project possibilities.
I understand that, but the, well, we can talk more offline since we've broached the subject. It's, there is no water that is for residents on the other side of that bridge, and this would allow for water for people on the other side of the bridge.
How many people are you talking about?
I will have to get the numbers from the water department.
Because it's Greenville Road, correct?
Yeah.
I think there's maybe four houses on the other side of that bridge, maybe six.
I think there's.
That are in Townsend.
Six or eight, yeah.
Well, I only mention this is because it may be appropriate to add it to as a town meeting warrant. We may keep looking for grants, but there is a disconnect between the money that was provided and the money that appears will cost to finish the project.
Yeah, we had looked at this in June. This was something that was bid out of, I don't know how we thought we were paying for it, but it was bid out in May. And the only other option is to borrow, which means that it's a town meeting thing. So, okay, so we'll look at that for either the special town meeting or the annual town meeting warrant. Ross, anything else?
The gazebo apparently needs a great deal of repairing. I guess there's a volunteer group that's been interested in working on this. A preliminary survey was done and there's a lead paint issue with the gazebo with a preliminary cost estimate of about forty-seven thousand dollars to remediate that problem. You may want to formally organize, you know, appoint a committee to do the repair or the rehab. We'll have to spend more time to figure out just what they want to do and what that will cost, as well as what the remediation will cost. This is mostly up that that's out there as a potential project.
Is that considered a historic structure?
I can't tell you. I don't know.
Okay.
It's in the historic district because the common is, but I don't know how long that gazebo has been there, and that may make a difference as far as whether or not it's a historic structure, so.
I think finding lead in it just complicated and greatly increased the cost of whatever they do.
Well, I'm all for doing whatever we need to do to preserve that, so I'm, whatever, whatever the selectmen feel that we need to do, then I'm all for it.
Should you, would you want to invite in the people that have been trying to work on it and see if there's a basis to form a gazebo committee?
Absolutely. I.
Go ahead.
I thought that there was a committee that had been formed by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I had talked to Adam about this at our, at his last office hours, so we should talk more about this and, and how the town goes about doing it.
Okay. There was also talk about where the money was coming. If it comes a hundred percent from the volunteers, then it doesn't take town funds and it saves, it may simplify the process. On the other hand, they may find it's too much money for the volunteers to front this on their own, which then brings it back to being a sort of a town project. Just passing this on mostly as a heads up, but it may also be appropriate to have this show up as a warrant article with whatever solution they work out.
I, yeah, I was curious as to whether that was a cemetery and park structure or is it a town structure? Who owns that? In any event, there's, there are some questions there, so yeah, yeah. Project possibility there.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not providing you with answers on.
I have a list of questions on that too, that I had asked Adam and he gave me some stuff, because I think that it does need, it is a project. It's just how do we go about doing it and what's the best way to do it?
Right, and it's almost like a feasibility kind of thing, kind of like when the dog park thing started. It was, you know, they made that into a formal committee of the town for whatever the reason was at that particular time, so. You know, I agree with Ross. If we have volunteers that are willing to, you know, put forth the effort, but I think that we, if we're all on the same page, you know, we should be able to figure that out in short order.
Right.
All right. The other thing I've got is, it was pointed out that since we're all meeting via Zoom, and I think two of you are out of town, is the board okay with either Chaz or myself signing the warrants this week?
Oh, I am not there to sign the warrant. That is true.
I am in town, but I would rather stay out of town hall until next Monday if possible.
My question.
Can we have a motion for Chaz and Ross to sign the warrant out of session this week? I hadn't even thought about that.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Cowell, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your employees and your vendors will.
Yes, for sure. All right.
Yes, thank you.
Ross, Ross?
Yes.
I can, I don't know if you put it on this one or not. We had a conversation in your office. I asked about, you know, maybe bringing up in your, your updates in regards to maybe the Board of Selectmen looking at doing a couple policies as far as for public safety, promoting within before we go out of town and using within local vendors. If all qualifications are met, did you do anything with that? Is that something that's coming down the line?
I guess my excuse is it's coming down the line, but I, I would characterize that as Townsend first as a policy, and that expands to what Joe said, is hire town employees if they, if they are at least equal to everybody else, and hire town vendors if they are at least equal to everybody else. But I think that's something the, the board may want to discuss in a future meeting and articulate that, you know, more carefully.
Can we, Madam Chair, can you put that on the agenda, on an agenda to come up, and we can get into that a little bit deeper?
Okay, I, yes, I would like to set up some work sessions for things like this to go over and look at as opposed to in a regular Tuesday meeting, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
All right, so let me.
Just look into it, and then we'll, we'll pick a date. It's something that doesn't have to be instantly, but I think it's something that we really need to do to take in, show our town employees that we do have in all departments that they mean something to us, and we want to make sure we retain those people within our town.
All right. All right, so noted. So, next item on the agenda is reports from Board of Liaison. So I put under general government, I'm general government. So, and I just listed the things that I wanted to go over. The first one is Brownfield's discussion regarding ninety-seven Main Street. I'm not ready to do that yet. This will be on the October nineteenth agenda, but I think the time to get this looked at, the grants are going in between now and early November. So this is looking with both MRPC and mass development. So I have to follow through on that a little bit more. I haven't yet. So there's that. I don't want that to get lost. The next one is the org chart personnel policies and procedures update. As we go through with the union contracts, the personnel policies and procedures were written a long time ago and before we had a lot of unions in town. So I think we need to look at that because, and update accordingly. And so I'd like to set up work sessions for that as well. And Ross, we can talk about that, especially with the, with what we're doing with the bargaining right now. So, the other thing I wanted a work session for was the ARPA funding. And I put in the SharePoint everything that I could find, because I thought when I did that, that we had to have a report done by the end of this month. They've changed that to, I believe it's the end of January, which is a good thing, because we need to identify the projects for the town. There's a lot of work that needs to be done for that. And, and the steps, there's a, the way they want things done in the report. I think the one thing that we could do immediately is the calculation for lost revenue, because one of the things that ARPA funds can be used for is to backfill lost revenue. So I, I think we need to look at that, and we also have to determine whether or not we're going to be handling the paperwork that's required for this, the accounting, et cetera, in town, or whether we are going to hire a consultant to do it. And I read somewhere, although I couldn't find it on a quick look this afternoon, I believe that in the same way that CARES Act funding paid for a consultant, that ARPA funds can also be used to pay for a consultant. But I need to make sure that that is actually true before we commit. So, so they said, so work sessions. I would prefer to do them during the day when, when it's not a regular meeting time. You know, on a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, because Ross would be in to join us for this. And, you know, we would post these as regular meetings, but I would like to do them in the daytime. But Joe and Chaz, you guys have regular jobs, so how does that fit?
That's a down.
What?
I'll be fine if you see a Wednesday during the week, as long as, as Ross says, if I'm around.
Chaz, Monday mornings, every other Monday morning?
Every other Monday morning, every other Monday, I'm free all day.
Well, hopefully, we won't be doing this all day, but I was thinking for, you know, an hour or two on a Monday morning. Ross, would that work for you, too?
That works.
Okay, to talk about, I think our number one would be ARPA funding. Our number two would be the policies that you mentioned, Joe, and our number three would be policies and procedures, personnel policies and procedures.
That's good. Yeah, I think we should do that.
And we had talked about personnel policies and procedures and updating them last year. And I, and there was a question about whether or not the Board of Selectmen could do that. So I talked to Adam with that as, on, about that as well, and I will share what we discussed during the work sessions on those updates. So, Chaz, so which Monday are we starting with, with the every others?
Well, not this Monday, but the following Monday.
Okay, yeah, so not the eleventh, that's a holiday, but, but starting then, what is it, the eighteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so.
I'll be out that day, but you can still start without me.
I'll be.
Okay, Ross, we'll start without you, and we'll get you caught up. How does that sound?
It would be the twenty-fifth, not the eighteen.
Oh, well, good. So then, we're all good then. The twenty-fifth will be our first work session, and the topic will be ARPA funding. So there's those two documents to look through that are in the SharePoint.
What time?
What time works for you guys? Ten to twelve?
Early the better, right?
Earlier is better, nine to eleven?
Yep, that's good.
Nine to eleven. Okay, so we'll post that.
Awesome, and that's on the twenty-fifth, right?
That is on October twenty-fifth, and then we will attempt, I don't know how it falls out with holidays, but we'll attempt to do every other Monday morning with a work session to get through those three things. All right, selecting goals. I put this here because of budgeting purposes. I, I think that selecting goals need to be set so that we can go forward. I guess, Ross, where, I think that I know what we did last year, and that was to have like a budget overview that was done by the treasurer, the accountant. And that was last year. I think it was actually the accountant that did it. Are we ready for that? How does that fall with STM, or ready to plan for it, I should say, not ready to have it tomorrow, but I think it's November is the timeframe for that, according to the budget policies.
I have to look in this, I have to look in to see what's required. I mean, I was anticipating getting together with Selectmen and Finance Committee late November, December timeframe to send out a budget guidance letter to all the departments for FY twenty-three.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's what you're talking about.
Well, it, it is, but that's like number three on the list. The, the first thing was to, to look at the overall financial health of the town. And there was, there are words for it, which I can't think of off the top of my head, but a financial overview that was done by the finance team. If we want to have a meeting beforehand, we could do that, but for the budget guidelines for departments to go out, I think that there are selecting goals for the town required first. And that's why I put this here. So, so I think that before we talk about ARPA, on the twenty-fifth, we should also discuss selecting goals for the town. And meanwhile, I'll look at my budget calendar for the things that are supposed to happen and when, because I went through those policies last year and kind of listed that by month. So I know that the school district presented us, I want to say, it was November, December timeframe that they presented to us what they were thinking. And I'm not certain on my timing.
They're starting that process next week, the thirteenth.
Right.
There's a Zoom session, and they're starting that process. So I think I talked to a superintendent this afternoon, and he anticipates that'll be October. He's talking about a November, December meeting, and then an early January meeting to sort of continue the budget process.
That is correct. So I, I think, I'm trying to remember whether it was November or December when the school committee presented to us what the schools were thinking. And our process for the town should be pretty much in parallel with that.
Yes, and I confirmed with the superintendent that, that meeting, when the school provides their intentions, the town can also present our intentions or.
Yes.
Goals, and I think that'll usually be at odds, and everybody will shriek and scream when they see the numbers, but I think you need to start the process.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and work towards a center point, and the earlier you do it, the better.
I, I know that we started last year, it was Thanksgiving week, or the week after Thanksgiving, was when we started the process last year, and it was a little late. It, it should be like early November, if I remember the policies, the budget policies. So, anyway.
Well, if you can share those with me, that'd save me hunting for them.
I will do that. It won't be till next week, Ross, but that's probably soon enough.
It's okay.
With everything else.
Well, we do have a special town meeting to pull off before we get too far into the next year's budget, but yeah.
Okay, all right. So that's what that was. TA search committee, we have received, as far as I know, more might have come in this week, one applicant for the at-large position on the charter committee. So if anyone else is, the charter committee is posted, and so if anyone from Planning Board or Finance Committee or whatever the things that we deter, a department head, I think it was, a town employee, please read that posting and fill out a volunteer response form if you're visit, if you're interested. We, the more people that apply, the more robust our decision-making process will be.
Madam Chair, could we have a memo go out from the selectmen to the boards that we're asking volunteers from?
I don't think we are asking for the boards to appoint the volunteer. We are asking for members from the boards to apply.
Right.
The TA search, not the charter, right?
This is the TH. Did I say charter? It's the TA search. It's not the charter, sorry.
Let me confuse.
Could it also be a representative from those boards or committees, or it doesn't have to be a member, but if they want to appoint someone to, to represent them?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they could do that.
Someone asked me that question, and I said, I thought that was feasible, but the final appointment is still going to be determined by the Board of Selectmen.
That, that would be correct. Let me, let me see if I can pull up that posting rather quickly here. Hang on. Jobs and volunteering. Okay, Town Administrator Search Committee. One finance committee member, one selectman, one employee, one department head, and one resident. So what we're looking for, the finance committee member, so we are actually looking for a member from the finance committee. And I thought that whoever from the finance committee wanted to be on that search committee, they could put in a volunteer response form for that. One selectman, so that's one of the three of us. One employee, so any employee that's interested could, could put in for it. One department head, so any department head that's interested could put in a volunteer response form. And one resident voter. So we do have a volunteer response form for that. I'm looking at this posting, and it doesn't really say how you do it. The Board of Selectmen hereby establishes a search committee. The committee shall screen candidates for the position of town administrator and forward the names of finalists to the Board of Selectmen. The committee shall dissolve when it forwards said list of candidates, unless the committee's term is extended. But it doesn't tell you, if interested, please forward a volunteer application form to the Office of the Board of Selectmen. So you fill out a volunteer response form, just like you would for any board or committee, is what you do. So Chaz, what are you looking for? Do you want us to send this to all the town employees? Could Ross, if he's doing a, a department head meeting this month, just let department heads know that we're looking for an employee and a department head, and that people could just put in the volunteer response form and send it to the selectmen at TownsendMA.gov?
Yep.
Would that work, Ross?
Department head meeting, absolutely.
Okay. And then we need to determine, and we can talk about this not necessarily now, but we could determine what their charter is. Have we thought about that at all? What are we going to ask the committee to do?
Um, I'm.
Besides screen applicants, is there something that we want them to look for in particular? Are we just forwarding the applications, you know, wholesale to them and say, here you go? So think about what we want the charter to be for that committee. And I don't see a deadline here. It would be great if we could appoint that committee on the nineteenth of October, our next meeting.
I, I think if you get enough good candidates, you should go ahead and do it on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
I agree. So we just, so far, I have seen one volunteer response form, so it would be good to have many more.
Yeah, I've seen one also.
So. All right, I, I think I'm gonna, I had wanted to come up with what do we want to ask them to do, but I didn't write anything up. Ideas? Okay.
Well, I, I mean, we had, I mean, I have some ideas, but we can, we can talk about that.
Okay, so let's work on, why don't we each give Ross our ideas for, sorry, Ross, I'm giving you more work, just add in there, but if we could each send him our ideas by, you know, next week, say the thirteenth or fourteenth, and he could combine them and put in what he thinks makes sense for a search committee. Being a TA, you might know exactly what we should be searching for, but we'll send you our thoughts for the, the, the direction that we are going to be giving the search committee, is what I'm looking for. That, that we have a, a direction that we agree to for them to do, so it's clear when they get in, when they get appointed, that they have a clear mission. So, we'll get that to you, Ross, then, if you guys are good with that, Joe and Chaz. All right, so submit to Ross.
And if all goes as planned, then I can have it summarized and put in the, in the SharePoint for you ahead of your meeting on the nineteenth.
That would be perfect. Okay. October nineteenth, we don't have a Wednesday afternoon meeting this week, but next week, Ross, to finalize that agenda. So that will be one of the things. Search Committee Charter, and appoint the search committee. All right, great. Next thing is, I just wanted to update on the grants. For shared streets and spaces, we are getting things purchased. purchased. Ross, were, did anybody come to you for a PO for the benches and and the bike racks today?
I saw, I believe it was Joan, and told her where she what she needs to do. I signed off on one of the quotes she had done for their, I think the course you had done for the flower.
Park catalog, yeah.
Yeah, so
We're getting.
She's waiting for some more quotes, you know, to finish it off, but I think she's moving ahead. Looks looks good.
I, okay, all right. And then we have the IFB that was posted for the striping. Hopefully, we'll get the one out there for the RRFB. And and I will talk to Mast dot next week to see, I might send an email this week if I get a chance, to see if we can get us an extension beyond December 31st. Because Jim Smith states that it would be way better to strike those bike lanes in the spring than now, right before the snowy season. Same with the ADA compliant crosswalk at Spalding where the RRFB will go, so. And everything else that we're purchasing, the signage, the benches, et cetera. If we have them, we can get them in place next spring. So I'll just confirm that with Mast dot. So, and Wild and Scenic, Parks and Cemetery, if you haven't had a chance, walk over to the Adams Dam Trail by off the Jeff Street Parking Lot. They're working on that actively now. They had to wait until well, it might be November 1st because of endangered species, but it's getting done. So, and the Conservation Commission met with us to look at that last week, just to confirm that a new, an amendment to the OOC for that wasn't necessary. So those two grants are moving along, and that is all I have. So moving on to elected boards.
Um, where do I start? Um, I'll start off with the Water Commission. Water Commissioners had a meeting last night. They're I I just want to commend that board. They're really doing a lot as far as the PFAS issue is concerned. There's a lot of system upgrades that they've been doing, hydrant flushing, the hydrants have been painted. They're talking about making sure that they work with the Fire Department to make sure that the hydrants are being shoveled out when they're supposed to. It's just, it's really nice to see the activity that's going on. Um, there has been some major problems on Highland Street with a couple of residents having difficulties with the water. The wind cross street well, that cross street well has been offline for a very long time. That came back on. They're having problems with the discoloration of water and and other issues involved in it. There has been a lot of work flushing hydrants, flushing out each individual residence and and that kind of thing. They do have to make some system changes right there in that area. They discussed that last night. And they had the residents on online in their meeting, so they've come up with a a plan to be able to, because Highland was just paved. We can't cut into that street, so there had to be contingency set up, and they do have a plan, and they're working on the plan as far as that's concerned. So I was very happy to see some some votes being made. Ross, they did decide for the, there is a 2016 Ford Fusion that they're going to they want to put for surplus. So if you could kind of help Dave, whatever he needs to do to to do that paperwork, he would appreciate it.
Can I stop right there just to say this while I'm thinking of it?
Sure.
Ross, that would be something in that Green Communities reporting, I think, cars that came online, offline vehicles, online, offline. It's one of the questions in that report. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, thank you.
Um, there was some talk in regards to, I actually lost my train of thought here.
The Ford Fusion.
Yep, Ford Fusion and there, there's been some changes in regards to some of the policies in regards to Water Department. Their, the there's a, the grant, they're, they're, they have written a grant for a a treatment plant for the Harbor Trace Well, and they submitted to me, which I submitted out today to both Senator Cronin and to Representative Sheila Harrington, a letter of asking them for a letter of support in regards to that grant to be able to to get that done. They also talked about staffing in regards to that treatment plant that needs to happen. And that would be the Water Department. I know that the IT Department is not elected, but can I put my comments in regards to the IT Department here? And also with TKM, if I can, Madam Chair?
Yes. TKM is on the agenda for October 19th.
Well, I just, I just wanted to give an update. For as far as all town laptops have been, the majority of them have been reconfigured. I finished today, we finished out with eight, and we are right on schedule for everything to be done by the end of this month is is what we we labeled it for. Everything else is online and and I'm happy to say that we have containment. I guess that's all I can say. And as far as, I just wanted to throw this out, TKM and I have been working together to be able to free up the Selectmen's Office with regards to the TKM equipment. So we are moving TKM equipment down into Meeting Room One to be able to free up space for us. And all of that equipment, we had a meeting today at 11 o'clock that really kind of finalized our next steps. So I just wanted the board to know that we are working on on that. That should happen by the, I'm assuming by the end of the month. And that's all I have.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
MIS, were the, were the additional laptops that we need for staff, et cetera, ordered?
That nothing has been ordered because I just submitted what what we wanted to look at. If if you want me to sign that quote, then I can do that.
I I think we should. Okay. I I think you should talk to Terry and have her check with Jennifer. I thought that those were okayed to be ordered. I don't know as far as the quote goes, whether.
They just need to say yes, yea or nay, and I just need to approve the quote, and it'll go through.
I think that the yea was already said, said. What I don't know is whether you need additional quotes before you place the order. So I would check with Terry on that. But I thought we got the okay from A and F to to order those.
Okay, that's the first.
That it was a I'll, I'll go back and look, that it was one of the three. I had sent four things to Jennifer, and it was one, it was the three that were approved, one that she was still checking on. The one that she was still checking on was Wi-Fi in the parts of the building, Town Hall, that don't have it. That was the one that needed to be justified, but the laptops were good to go.
All right, I have that separate, so I can approve that quote.
Okay, check with Terry then.
Okay. And that's it.
All right. Because we only have until the end of October. Things have to be invoiced by then and money spent for the CARES Act.
Yep.
Okay. Joe, anything further? On public safety?
No, public safety, I think I've kind of hit on that. I just want to make sure that, Ross, I don't know if you have passed on the letter that I received from the fire officers in the meeting for the board to at least have a copy to review. And as we get into that down the road, we can have further discussions about that. Fire is the Fire Department. I think it's really, it's showing progress. It's showing that, you know, hopefully, that everyone can get some camaraderie back together, everyone start trusting everybody and move forward. I think Mr. Shepherd has put his best foot forward. I've seen a lot of his officers have stepped up to the plate, which is really huge. I think the whole thing of people leaving, I think that's been kind of slowed down, so we're not going to be losing probably as many people as we thought. The Police Department, you know, they're, they've got a few things going over there right at this time. That's a lot of stuff's not public knowledge, so when that all breaks, we can discuss that. But other than that, just hope we move forward in a positive direction. That's it.
All right. 5.3 announcements and communications. The only one I had was the Historic District Commission. The resignation that we are accepting to have the seventh opening on the Historic District Commission. So that, I think, is already posted, actually.
Yes.
And we talked about that earlier. Anybody else?
Yeah.
That was the only one I had pulled out at the time that I did this.
I I also had agreed to, as far as the Planning Board Administrator, I to Ross said I would make an announcement that they have an opening for an associate member. She said, look in the camera and smile, so that's what I'll do for her. Um, also, this Saturday, Happy Horror Days is happening, the Haunted Trail at the Townsend Library. It's this Saturday, October 9th, from 7 to 9 o'clock. Rain date would be on Sunday. The admission is $7 and $6 with a canned donation, a canned goods donation for the TEO. This is presented by the Friends of the Townsend Public Library and the Townsend VFW Auxiliary. This will be a lot, a lot of fun. It's right at the library. In there may or may not be a guest tour guide. That's a selectman here in town. So if you're lucky, you'll be able to be touring around the Happy Horror Days with one of our selectmen here. I also wanted to say that no, that's, I can do that on the 19th. I'm sorry. So that's all I got.
I can add that it's been on the lighted sign. Greg's Run is on Saturday, the 10th, at 10:30 in the morning, or the 9th, rather, at 10:30 in the morning, and they have a website that you can look at for further information, and there are road closures associated with that. So the normal ones.
Yeah, I, we have a lot of openings for volunteers, and and, you know, this town runs on volunteers, you know, Duncan runs, you know, everybody runs on Dunkins. Well, the town runs on volunteers, and you know, there's a lot of really good boards and committees that that really need your help, our help. It doesn't, you don't necessarily need to have some expertise. You need a a willingness to to help serve with the public. Look on our website and look at all of the volunteer openings that we have. And if you have any questions at all, you can certainly call anybody here at Town Hall. They'll be able to answer any questions. But if you have a few hours a week, a few hours a month, we definitely could use your help. So, you know, I encourage anyone to public services is a good way to help out your community, and and we certainly do need your help.
Well said.
They're all posted under jobs and volunteering on the website, so.
One, one click away.
One click away. All right, our next meeting is October 19th. That's a regular Tuesday night meeting, and we have an October 25th at 9 a.m. work session. And we've already done signing the payroll and bills payable out of session for this week. Do we have a motion to do the same for next week? Well, for us to sign, I don't think we'll I think we'll be back.
You want to do that now? You want to do it at on the 18th? I mean, on the 19th, you want to do it now?
I want to do it now because it's the week of the 11th. We, we voted for you guys to do it this week, you and Ross. So just a motion to sign bills payable out of session for the week of the 11th.
So, so moved.
And seconded. All those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Chaz Exnderanian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourn at 8:09.
Second.
All those in favor?
Go Shank, yes.
Chaz Exnderanian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. Thank you, everybody.